Okay, at being 6:30, I'll call to order the meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education. Today is Monday, December 16th, 2019. We're at the Oregon High School Innovation Center. Ms. Heights, could you call the roll?
Ms. Feeney?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Oderico?
Here.
Ms. Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Pinkritz?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Here.
Mr. LeBrun?
Here.
Mr. Zach?
Present. Board has a quorum. I've noticed that the board has been appropriately noticed under Wisconsin Open Meetings Law, and that notice will be with Ms. Heights if anyone wants to inspect it. Our agenda this evening contains our consent calendar items. We have a graduation this evening, which is unusual for mid-year, but exciting. Communication from the public, we're going to do this in a couple segments. Communication from the public on all issues other than the school start and end times will take place early in the meeting. We'll defer to the agenda item on school start and end times, any public comment on that, as well as the OE report at that time. Then we have a student report, but not on the big issue that you guys are going to report on, right? You're the only ones who know the secret, you know? I think so, okay. And then we have action items, and we're going to act on attendance area boundaries, transportation conditions of payment, our school resource officers agreement. We have our audit report, and naming of elementary school number four. Unless there's a tie, right? Is there a tie? Okay, there's not a tie. Yeah, that's right. And then we'll have a discussion information item on the school start and times, but we will not act on that item tonight. That's going to be deferred to our first meeting in January. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, we have an agenda for approving. That takes us to item A, consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar that any board member wishes to have removed? Okay, seeing none, I accept a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Is something moved?
Mr. LeBrun with the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Oderico with the second. I would note that we have a number of donations this evening. Becky Grunier, $50 for lunch accounts. ExxonMobil Corporation, $500 for Brooklyn Elementary. Michael and Karen Victorson have donated $5,000 for the Oregon High School scoreboard. Fans 5K Run donated slightly over 1,700 for the Allison Norland Scholarship, and that's been a scholarship that's been ongoing for a number of years. Pure Integrity Homes has made a donation for classroom face painting sessions. Keith and Marilyn Scoville have donated $300 for the Scoville Scholarship, and Sherri Hill has donated $800 for the splash pad. We thank all of those folks for their donations to the Oregon School District to make this a better place. With that, do we have any, we don't have any contracts or anything on this. Okay, all in favor of the items on the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items on the consent calendar are approved, including the donations. That takes us to item number B, information items. We have a graduation here. Dr. Bustler, I'll turn the floor over to you.
I will get it started. First, would Ms. Schmidt and Erica Otto please come forward? And you are welcome to have a seat, too. Board members, we are delighted to be able to present to you this evening Erica Otto as a 2019 Oregon School District graduate. She has met all the requirements prescribed by school board policy, as well as requirements by the Department of Public Instruction, so we are delighted to give her the opportunity to publicly graduate in her no cap but a gown. We tried to make it a cap, too, and what we thought we'd start with is Ms. Schmidt's going to share a little bit about her story because Erica has worked her way through night school, and I've been kidding her, maybe she would even, the spirit might move her to say something tonight. But if not, at the conclusion of their presentation, President Zach, Mr. Pliner, and I will present her with her diploma in front of our Five Value poster. So, Ms. Schmidt, you have the floor.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the board members, Dr. Bustler, Dr. Bergstrom, and Mr. Pliner, for restarting night school. And I think it was the day it came out, I got a message on Facebook, through the Facebook ad, from Erica, saying, "I really want to do this, and can you help me?" And it was really a small amount of help, because Erica was one of those learners that was ripe, falling off the tree type of fruit, ready to go. So on the first day of night school, she came in shaking and said, "I'm really scared, I'm really nervous." She refused to call me anything but Mrs. Schmidt for the whole time, because she took school so seriously. I gave her what I thought was a week's worth of homework on the first night, and at 2:00 in the morning, I got an email that said, "I'm all done with my homework. What's my next assignment?" And Erica plowed through like that all the whole time. And so we, I am honored to speak on her behalf and to say, "She did it." And I got to be a coach and a cheerleader on the sidelines for her. So, one other thing that I just wanted to say that was amazing to me is, this is why Tuesday nights are my favorite nights of the week, because that's night school night. Erica has this passion for learning, and she, at one point, got done with a test, and she said it was 96%. And she said, "No, I studied for this, and I know those other answers. Can we take it again?" I said, "Oh, sure."
It was 94.
No, 94. So, yes, she has met the requirements. She has met proficiency in every category, and she has earned her diploma. Thank you all for allowing us this opportunity.
Thanks. So Erica, anything you want to say to the board?
Thank you for allowing me to look at my diploma and finally graduate.
Well, on behalf of the board, we're very proud of you, and we're incredibly impressed with your perseverance. And if you want to come forward, I've got something that we would like to give you.
You may have noticed, she has a couple of superheroes with her tonight. Captain America, Spider-Man, her husband, and some friends and relatives. So congratulations again, Erica, and best wishes in the days ahead.
Thank you. Well, that was good, wasn't it? Maybe we could do this all the time.
We started every day like that.
That was a good one. That takes us to item C, communication from the public. Board policy 18004 has established the opportunity for the public to address the board, so now it would be the opportunity to do that, and we're going to do that with respect to all issues that anyone wants to talk to, other than the school start and end times. And I think Katie, one?
Holly.
Okay.
Holly Lovely.
Okay. Holly, would you come on forward, and then come up to the table there? Do we have the mic on? Do you know, Gina, if you could double check?
Good evening. Hi. Hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Holly Lovely, and I live in the Autumn Woods neighborhood. I'm here tonight to speak about the attendance boundaries. I know this is a tough decision for the board, but I want to share my story with you. My husband and I moved to the Autumn Woods neighborhood roughly two, two and a half years ago. Our story is like many people looking for a new house. We wanted to know where our children would go to elementary school. This mattered to us so much, because we'd actually moved from the Madison School District to the Verona, and we're now looking at Oregon. My husband, throughout high school, was forced to go to a school outside of his town several miles away. This had a lasting impact on him, and has continued to come up in weird conversations about his high school life. My children now, one of which goes to Netherwood, Noel, and the other one who is in 4K here, really like living in the village and going to the village elementary schools for all of the activities. Everything from visiting the pool, to the open gym nights, to other things that we do in the community. By changing those boundaries, other children in our neighborhood would, like other concerns from other parents tonight, would spend longer on the bus, one of the top priorities. We specifically purchased a house in an established neighborhood so that we could be close to the village elementary schools. And now our children are looking at going to Brooklyn. So I know there's not a lot of, if any, other parents here from the Autumn Woods neighborhood tonight, but I just want to let you know that this will have a lasting impact on our community going forward if you choose to send all of our children to Brooklyn. We know that there's other families that are much closer to the elementary schools, like those on South Prairie, that will be affected by this, that may have taken the closeness of our elementary schools into consideration when they purchase their homes.
Great. Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item D, which is the information items, an OA report, and we're going to reserve that till we get to school start time. Let's see Laura in the back. Yep, yep. Student report. Kabi and Jenna, this isn't on our naming of the school, but anything else that you want to report to us on?
Yeah, we wanted to touch on a couple things. This is a little excerpt from Mr. Pliner. Recently, the OHS Musical Guys and Dolls, which was put on this past fall, was nominated for a handful of Jerry Awards, which is one of Wisconsin's high school musical awards programs. The final awards, we're going to have to wait until about early, early May, maybe April, to hear the final results, but we would like to extend our congratulations to all who were nominated. We received multiple nominations, which I will read now. We were nominated for Outstanding Musical, Outstanding Ensemble, Outstanding Orchestra, Outstanding Lead Performances from Eric Zentel, Lawrence Stoneman, Kyle Kapusta, Miranda Moore, and Kenny Crich, Outstanding Supporting Performance from Caleb Mathias and Ian Black, Outstanding Dance Performance from Kyle Kapusta, Outstanding Direction from our director, Michael Doucette, Outstanding Musical Directors from Jen Yancy and Michelle Kabish, Outstanding Choreography from Alyssa, oh, I might butcher that, Dvorak? Dvorak, and Salma Domasette, Outstanding Stage Management from Angela Hessler, Outstanding Overall Design, Outstanding Scenic Design from Joel Kapusta and Mike Doucette, Outstanding Lighting Design from Claire Michaels, Outstanding Costume Design from Samantha Kapusta, Outstanding Sound Design from Nate Mendel. So we just wanted to recognize this wonderful musical and all of, all that, the work that our students and our staff and our community put into making it happen, so that's me.
Awesome. And then this past week, our student council put on a week of events that all the proceeds, all the profits went to Friends of Oregon School District, which, which Kristoff Flanagan helps run. And through that, we have raised over $1,000 to that. Recently, in the past couple minutes, Mike Carr met our collection from The Miracle Minute on Friday with a donation of $500, so thank you for that. We are also continuing cookie sales this week to hopefully increase that profit, and we will keep you updated on that. Thank you.
Well, great things happening. Thanks for the report on that. Any questions from the board? Okay. Takes us to item E on our agenda, action items. The first one is attendance area boundaries, and I'll turn that over to Brian.
Board members, we're going to have Dr. Bergstrom, who was one of our co-chairs on the Attendance Boundary Task Force, walk through the board recommendation. And you know from a previous meeting, we were going to bring this back following the parent informational sessions, and we do have it on as an action item for your consideration tonight. Leslie?
Thank you.
So when I first spoke to you about the proposal that came from the committee, it was, I believe, October 28th, and as we discussed it, the board approved it as a conceptual plan with the note that they would like us to go out and get feedback from the community regarding the plan itself. And that is exactly what we did. As you know, we held three different listening sessions, December 2nd, 7th, and 12th. And as Dr. Bustler will describe later in the evening, as we discussed the school start and stop times, Attendance Boundaries was one of the stations at the informational meetings. So after talking to people during these listening sessions, in addition to receiving feedback via email, we noticed a couple of important pieces. And that was that the parents really appreciated the existence of an exemption process, that keeping siblings together in an elementary school was very important to families, and transportation availability is a significant concern. So given what we learned in the listening sessions, then we want to ensure that the exemption process is straightforward and provides parents with a timely response. We understand that parents are making plans for the children, and they need to know things as soon as they possibly can. And secondly, we will assign younger siblings entering school in the blue or red attendance areas to the school the older sibling attends, because we found out that that was extremely important to people also. And then finally, transportation will be a component of honoring those placements in the, in the blue and red zones. However, transportation outside of attendance boundary areas cannot be permanently guaranteed, as we do not know how transportation guidelines will evolve as we grow in another school in Phase Two. So it's also important to note that there is one northern subdivision that we are discussing with our consultant, Mark Roffers, as to whether or not there would be a lasting impact if it was added to the yellow zone. It's currently listed as blue, and we're awaiting some information before Mark, so we would call that area currently under review. Otherwise, based on the presentation on October 28th, the feedback we received and the adjustments we will make due to that feedback, we would like the Oregon School Board to approve the proposal as recommended by the School District Attendance Boundary Committee in October.
Does the board have any questions of Dr. Bergstrom? I'm going to look over here, Anna, Troy, or Courtney?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Troy.
Dr. Bergstrom, the area that you mentioned is in question. What initiated that reconsideration of that? Was it parent?
It was, it was parent feedback.
Okay. So I guess, would we be looking at approving this tonight as is? Or how would that, how would that play out with that area being in question?
Yes, I would say we could approve it tonight as is, and if there is an amendment to it, then we could come back and discuss that later. But the other piece is, I imagine that over the course of time, there will be some fluidity, depending on how our growth happens, and we'll be able to keep the board informed of that also.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Anna or Courtney?
I just wondered, do we have easily available a map that shows those boundaries again, just so we can refresh our memory?
It's in the next presentation, so if we just pick that up, we'll be able to do that.
And then while you're looking for that, Leslie, could you just remind me of what the exemption process briefly looks like?
Before spring break, because that was discussed at one of the listening sessions, we will be sending out placement letters to families, and in that placement letter, there will also be an exemption process if they'd like to file to attend a school other than where they were placed. And we expected the exemption process to apply pretty significantly to people when it came to their younger children attending the same school as their older children. But through multiple discussions and after listening to feedback, we will just do an automatic placement of a sibling entering school to be with their older sibling, so that we don't have to ask more families to fill out a form, because we understand we're all trying to do what's best for families, best for kids.
And remind me, a child that's currently in an existing school, should that boundary change because of what we've done? Would they automatically stay in the school that they're currently in, or would they have to apply for an exemption?
Students in the K-4 students in the blue and the red zones will have their placements honored. So our students in yellow, they will be assigned to the new school, and if they don't want to go to the new school, they would have to fill out an exemption form. But there are some students who were placed in Netherwood who are now in the Brooklyn area, as an example, and they will continue to be placed in Netherwood without the filling out of an exemption form. That's correct. We will honor those placements.
I think those are really important points for people to hear, that if the older sibling is already in a school, the younger sibling will go to that school, and they don't have to fill out an exemption. Do we have a sense of how many families that affects, or how many students estimation at all?
No, we know how many of our 4K students are, have current siblings. We could figure that out very simply, but we also know that there are move-ins where that might happen, too. We don't, I don't have an exact number for you.
Just curious. Thanks.
And in terms of an exemption, if somebody is in, I know the border, the borders are, tend to be the biggest issue.
Yes.
But if we have people in, solidly in the red, is, does the exemption process also open up the opportunity to go to the yellow?
Oh, certainly. Absolutely, they could do that. We will be probably very cautious about filling up the, the school and the yellow area with students, K-4 students, living in blue and red, because we want to ensure that there is space as those surrounding neighborhoods are built out.
Sure.
But absolutely, they could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one follow-up question to that? So if someone is in red, and they fill out exemption, and we assign them to blue or yellow, we are, we are saying, by what I read on here, that they may be able to get transportation, or we will if there's room? Is that what you're saying on here?
Yes, the transportation will be dependent on how far away. We wouldn't take someone from the actual village of Brooklyn up to Fitchburg by bus. That wouldn't be a reasonable piece. But students who are living near and around the village area, there is flexibility in that.
Barb, any questions?
I guess just follow-up on that, that if there's a question mark, think we'd do some kind of analysis about how much time would be added to a bus route to pick up a student. And I'm assuming we're going to be very careful to not lengthen bus routes.
Absolutely. We wouldn't want to pick up other children 15 minutes early so we could pick up one person with an exemption, yes.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? Seeing none, the recommendation from administration is to approve the attendance boundaries as, as presented both in October and tonight, so I'd need a motion to approve that recommendation. Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Oderico with a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I know this would took a lot of time and thought to, to work through with the administrative team and with Mr. Roffers to work through new attendance boundaries. It's, it's never easy. I remember we did this once before in reshuffling the elementaries, and that took a lot of time, and there was a lot more, I think, controversy in terms of the attendance boundaries at this time. So thank you for your work on, on this, and I think inherent in, in this is the fact that there is flexibility in an exemption process, and we're considering that one area as we move forward. And I think if that changes, Dr. Bergstrom, we can come back and just amend, amend this, if that would be your recommendation.
Absolutely, yes.
Yep.
In addition to Dr. Bergstrom and Mr. Roffers, there was a task force, just a reminder to everyone. There was a task force that included parents, transportation folks, staff, community members, so it wasn't just.
Yep.
It certainly wasn't. That would have been a very lonely and difficult task.
Right, right. So this has been vetted and thought about.
It was a lot of wonderful people doing a lot of work from May of 2019 all the way up to September, and many of those committee members attended the listening sessions to be of support there also.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention, Courtney. Okay, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, could you call the roll?
Ms. Feeney? Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkritz?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Leslie. Thank you to the task force and the committee that worked on that. And you continue the planning process. That takes us to action items E2, 2019, 2020, transportation conditions of payment, and Andy, that's yours.
Thank you. Yeah, a little bit behind where we'd like to be, but we realized about a month or so ago that we hadn't brought this forward to you, and so we are proposing a 2.44% increase, slightly larger than that because of a particular area that the contractors wanted to deal with, but basically a 244 increase on everything except a small increase in hourly rates for hourly employees that the contractors use. As everybody knows, it's difficult to find folks out there willing to drive, and so that extra 25 cents the contractors felt was important in order to get, get quote quality drivers. So Mr. Hagstrom is here tonight, if anybody has any questions, but basically a very cut and dried increase. We also put some language in there to encourage a discussion regarding alternative fuel vehicles, which is kind of an up and coming thing that's happening out in the industry and correlates with our board policy regarding sustainability.
And Andy, this fits within our approved 2019, 2020 budget?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Andy regarding the transportation conditions of payment? Okay, seeing none, I would seek a motion to approve the contract as presented.
I want to approve the contract.
Wait, Ms. Oderico and Mr. LeBrun? Is there any further discussion? Troy?
I would just say it's really nice to see the focus on environmental sustainability with the encouragement to explore alternative fuel buses. It's a great addition.
Thanks for coming tonight. If people don't know, Jim Hagstrom is in the back, one of the longtime bus contractors. We have a really unique arrangement with our, with our bus contractors. I think it's the only one like this in the state, and it's sort of like our family-run operation, where we have families in the district providing transportation, and it's special, and I think, Jim, you know that even more now, having sustained a fire loss and the cooperation that you got from all the contractors, and we hope things are going well in terms of your moving forward from the fire, and we appreciate all your family's service to the district in, in providing transportation for our students. Yep, yep. Krista?
I think one other important point to note is that our bus contractors have also attended a lot of trainings that the school district has held in terms of, we see it in the contract here, but managing violence on the school bus, handling parent contact. They've done some equity training with us, and so I think those are really important points of our bus contractors really being part of our value system and our team here at the school district, so I want to thank them for doing that.
Yep, as we tell them at our annual breakfast, we, we view them as part of our educational team in the district. Can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkritz?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, transportation conditions of payment is approved by the board. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Jim, and if you would express your thanks to all your fellow contractors, we'd appreciate that. Takes us to item number E3, the SRO agreement. And is that you, Brian, or Gina? Ms. Jonah?
I am happy to report that we have a new SRO agreement for your approval tonight. We have been working very diligently with the Village of Oregon the past few months to reach a new agreement. If you'll remember, we had an interim agreement through December 31st that rolled over our 2018-19 SRO agreement while we had discussions with the village. I would say our discussions have been very collaborative. We agreed that we prioritize the safety of our schools, and we also wanted to meet the needs of our stakeholders in this new agreement. We also held a listening session on November 14th where we sought feedback on the working draft. I would say that the feedback from that session was very positive on the new agreement to be approved tonight. As you will see in the new agreement, there's very specific language that the As you will see in the new agreement, there's very specific language that the village and the district need to go through a meet and discussion process before an investigation is initiated on school grounds. And we have already started doing that with Lieutenant Pagan cough. And I would say from my lens, that has gone very, very well. And we are working well together. We also have monthly safety meetings that the police and the fire participate in that are run by Mr. Wyland. So I, I think that our relationship is in a really great place right now and that we are doing a nice job of balancing the safety of our students with a respectful learning environment for all of our kids. So we asked tonight that you approve the SRO agreement for the remainder of this school year. Our plan is to work with Lieutenant Pagan cough to set goals for the SRO program that we will meet this summer to evaluate and before we discuss a new agreement with the village. And I would really like to thank Mr. LeBrun, Ms. Flanagan, and Dr. Bustler's leadership on this agreement because we had a number of meetings and had really great discussion. So what did I miss? What would you like to add?
Chris or Tim? Chris and Tim helped us on behalf of the board to sit down with the village to have a dialogue with them on the agreement. So do you guys have anything you want to add?
Yeah. I mean, I really want to recognize Gina. She really took the lead in doing a lot of research and really drafting this agreement. So she didn't recognize herself, but she's a real big reason why we're here tonight with this new agreement. And it's a really, a much better agreement for the students of this school district. I think a couple of important things are, is we really stressed, and it's now in the agreement, that the SRO is really a unique individual that has three roles and one of them is law enforcement. They're also an educator and they're an informal counselor and mentor. And those are really important things for us as an educational institution that it's, it's known and agreed upon with the village police department that that's the role of the SRO. And we also really listened to parent feedback about the interview process. And so as, if you're interested in reading the SRO agreement, it's available to you. But it really talks about our students, their rights, and when interviews are okay or not, and that parents will be a part of that process. So again, I want to recognize Gina for really shepherding that.
I'd like to echo that as well. Gina has done a great job leading this effort. And I also want to recognize the village and the police department because it, we were a little rocky when we first got started. And I think it was everyone's willingness to take a step back, to understand the others' position, where their place of understanding was on this agreement, which I think was a big help to help us, to help me understand where the village and the police department were coming from and then, then them taking the opportunity to hear where the school district was coming from. Because it was, I think, at certain points of our discussion, we were a long ways away from understanding. And so I think it's a real win, not just for the students here, but for the district, the police department, and the village. Because we, a few months ago, it, it wasn't as positive as it is today. And I'm delighted to know where it is today. So thank you, Gina.
So we would need a motion to approve the SRO agreement. And I'm looking at you two as a logical one.
And I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Troy?
Just a quick question. So this would go from now date of approval through this school year? And then we would, we would revisit it again next year?
Yes, that's correct. So we have the SRO through graduation. And then that gives us the summer to evaluate and continue discussion and have a new agreement in place for next school year of 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead.
One thing I would say about that is we also did discuss that we're not going to wait till the summer, that we will start having these discussions in April about, and there's interim meetings about how it's going. We have a more, I would say, comprehensive review process. And then we'll also start those discussions in April.
This is a really good document. I, I see a lot of these and this is really good. And so I'm, I know that you're going to have discussions with it, but this document is a terrific form. So, good job. Anna?
I just have a quick question. Did you say, Chris, that this will be posted to the Oregon School District webpage for easy access for parents? Because I know that was one of the concerns or requests, was to have it readily available and logical to find for people who are looking for this type of information.
Yes. So as soon as it's approved by the board, Eric and I have talked and we will have a page on the SRO with little information about the program and the agreement and contact information along with other resources.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Katie, would you call the roll?
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Odegaard?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkritz?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Gina. Thank you, Tim and Krista and to the village for moving us forward on that. Item E4 is the acceptance of our June 30th, 2019 audit report. And that's Andy.
Thank you. Audit starts kind of working on, we start working on this in about June of each year. Goes through a lot of work in August and September. So takes a little while for everybody to check all the documents and make sure everything's right. We're bringing this to you at this time to just formally accept it. The numbers that are in the document are all the same numbers that we've reported at the annual meeting and on. That's one of the reasons why we moved the annual meeting to later. I want to thank Carr Newton, our finance director, who's really, is the person that gets all the documents and ready for the auditor and works with them through everything. The most important part is, I think on page 58 is, it's an unmodified audit. So there are no serious findings or anything. In fact, page 38, 58 talks about that. There were no financial material weaknesses identified or significant deficiencies. We have a very clean audit, essentially is what that means. So I'm going to just touch on a few highlights of it. Again, these numbers are something that you've already seen. Total assets going up a little bit, which is always a good sign each year to show that. We do incorporate depreciation into this, which is not usually a governmental type thing. But with GASB, results or GASB requirements, we do have to do that now. So again, our assets are increasing slightly. You kind of see that over time. Our, our fund balance went down a touch, and I'll talk about that in just a second in the next slide here. Our fund balance is made up of four different components. We have non-spendable. That's basically land in our, our home construction house. It wasn't sold by July 1st, so therefore it was an unspendable item in our audit. Restricted is basically our self-funded health dental plan. And that's the balance of what's in that fund. And then assigned is what we've been calling carryover for all these years. And we've talked quite a bit about that in time. You see that the assigned balance did go down fairly significantly, over 100, or $500,000 from last, from the year prior. A lot of that was related to money that we had set aside a couple of years prior to build the restrooms and the showers and the mechanical room for the splash pad at the pool. And then unassigned, unassigned is kind of our cash flow vehicle, if you will, so that we can meet bills throughout the fiscal year because our funding doesn't come, that allows us to pay our bills, especially in November, December, and January. Those are our real low cash months. Without that unassigned balances, we would have to borrow money in order to make payroll.
Can I, can I ask you about that, Andy?
Yeah.
If you interrupt right now?
You bet.
Because that's an important component. Because when you and I were brand-new, 20-plus years ago, we were borrowing $3 million every year just to make cash flow. How close are we getting to not having enough unassigned fund balance to meet our cash flow?
I think there was a certain point in time, I'd, I'd have to go look at an email that Carr sent me, but I think we were within $300,000, $400,000 maybe after a payroll in November.
Okay.
She was at the point where she said, hey, if you could slow down paying bills a little bit, that would be good.
Had we, did we have to dip into our assigned fund balance to assist with that?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. That's, when we talk about cash flow availability, we're talking about all of those balances.
Okay.
Yep.
The assigned and unassigned, not the restricted and non-spendable.
Yeah. When, when these funds are in our bank account, they're all commingled, right? This is just to look at it at the end of, at the end of June.
Okay. So one of the things, board, as we approach budget time for next year, that's going to be an item that we'll, we'll have to look at because that balance impacts not only cash flow and ability to meet it and trying to avoid short-term borrowing, but also as we look out three or four years, the potential of having to build a new school, it will impact our bond rating as well if we don't have sufficient fund balance to meet our cash flow needs.
That's correct. And just to kind of underscore a point that you made that I kind of glanced over, had we spent all of our assigned fund balance in this situation, the $1.4 million at the end of June 30th, 2019, we probably would have had to cash flow borrow, simply because that money wouldn't have been available to meet, to meet bills. Wouldn't have been, maybe been a couple of weeks, wouldn't have been very long, but it would have been a requirement that we would have had to gone through.
And there's nothing wrong with that. It just costs us interest and that eats into our operational budget.
Correct.
Andy, I should know, but I don't. Do we have a short-term borrowing vehicle out there?
We do.
That we, a commitment that we don't have to go through the process?
I, I think we do until maybe the end of December. I'd have to look at that. We have a line of credit available at Oregon Community Bank, which we actually accessed last year. That was more related to the purchase of the property. I think at that time, it was the property that the school was built on. The developer wanted to close that, that sale before the end of the calendar year. And so we did go ahead and spend those funds to do that. And that put us in a situation where we had to borrow. I think that was actually in January for about three weeks. Yep. Last thing on here is there's some percentages. These are just good things to know or think about as far as a percentage. Auditor uses unassigned general fund balance, but they also use, in the denominator of their equation, they use the budget. And we have, since Mr. Zach talked about, almost 20 years ago, when we established our fund balance budget, we created a metric so we could measure it. Our metric base is based on actuals. This is something that our auditor came up with a few years ago. So the percentages aren't the same, and it's just simply because they use a different denominator than we do as far as calculating the percentages. So when I show you that on that page, we have, you know, 18 years of history. On the next page, that's, that's the only difference to it. But in this situation, you see our unassigned balance going up to almost 19%. And there we go. And so here's an, almost, well, about 18 years of, of balances. You can see that we're reporting on the unassigned balance, 21.42. The only difference is what I just mentioned, the difference is the denominator. So here's a kind of a.
Real quick question on that. What percentage should we be at if we want to have a comfort level in terms of cash flow needs, do you think, if we got up to 22, 23?
Yeah. I think we'd be closer. Sometimes people talk about kind of 25%. It really depends on the district and where your revenues come from. I mentioned at our annual meeting that we were hitting where we're getting into negative tertiary aid. What that means is more of our money is going to be coming from property taxes. As you know, this, we all got our property tax bills about a week ago, at least I did in the, in the village. Those funds are, usually don't come to us until January then. So obviously, making the payrolls in November are going to be a little bit more difficult. So as our revenues kind of switch to property tax, taxes, it becomes more of a, an issue for us to make sure that we do have those reserves in place. So real quickly, just looking at, again, the general fund and our education fund, revenues to budgets, you can see the change in fund balance, actual to budget. Again, the reason that we show 2019 a, a decrease in our, our fund balance, if you would, or, or more expenditures than revenues, is simply because we're spending or planning to spend those carryover funds so that it authorizes the buildings to be able to spend them if they need to. So not something to worry about. Obviously, we outperformed that budget significantly. We still did decrease our fund balance by 133,000, but all of that, majority of that, or actually more than that, was the unassigned fund balance and what I was talking about before with the pool. So not something to be alarmed by. It was intentional and we outperformed our, what our, what our goal was. This just breaks down the rest of the funds. Again, nothing significant really to, to show here, other than the capital project fund, where obviously went up significantly as we got the bond proceeds to build a new elementary school and the properties that we purchased.
Yeah, just a little. Andy, could you go back to that?
You bet.
The food service balance of 261,000 is, that's going to be utilized in part to equip the new school though, right?
Slightly. We're anticipating using about 30-some thousand dollars to, of that fund balance in order to get everything that we wanted for the new school. We also, as I've talked about before, when we were setting food service prices, we have, we have to anticipate some extra, it's good to have a, a balance at the end of the year when we're going into opening a new kitchen because there will be significant overhead associated with that kitchen. And until we kind of have additional students in there to compensate for that extra overhead, the first couple of years might be a little bit tough. So having that extra fund balance in there or that revenue over expenses the last year there as a cushion is kind of a good thing.
And, and that's been intentional on our part to, to drive that up a little bit because of the new school.
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions on this slide? All right. This is just a simple graph kind of showing you what's going on, on different expenditures and what percentages are. You can see that the one that seems to be going up the highest is that we're spending more and more money on instructional expenditures. Our support is not too far behind that. And then non-program services, which are tuition and those types of things and debt service, kind of fairly flat. General revenues, and this includes special education, these are just basically our different revenue sources. And you can see from this that I believe our local component and our state component, how those are interacting together. Our local component actually went down a little bit last year and our state component went up. So still, those things are interacting with each other. Everything else, other than our local property taxes and our state, are fairly minor compared to those, those revenue sources.
And you're expecting the purple's going to start trending more close to the aqua?
Correct. Yeah. It's going to, they're going to start crossing each other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. They're going to, they're going to both tie into each other this next, at our next audit. Not, and they won't touch, but they're getting close. And then this is simply a calculation related to what our capacity for debt is and compared to what, what our actual debt is. So you can see that we popped up a little bit with this, the referendum this last year, but we are still significantly lower than our statutory capacity. And that is the end of the presentation. What questions do you have for me?
Any questions over here? Tim?
I just want to make a note, when you mentioned that there weren't any red flags on the audit, having been in the banking business, I, sometimes I feel like they spend the audit time looking for something to put at the end of that report.
Right.
And so to be exhaustive about it and not have anything of substance at the end of that report is extraordinary.
Yeah. Yeah. I do encourage people, this will be on the website as well. It's about 61 pages. Probably a fourth of it is related to the pension system, requirements that the auditors have to put in regarding the Wisconsin retirement system. That actually does have an impact on our audit, but the, the rest of it is, is good stuff related to Oregon School District, if you are so inclined.
Any other questions or comments, Troy?
Just a comment about following up Steve on your question and Tim's question on the fund balance. And we've talked about increasing that and we've talked about maybe decreasing some And we've talked about increasing that, and we've talked about maybe decreasing some of that carryover balance that we have. How would we initiate that? Is that part of our policy, or is that just a procedural item that you handle?
Really be discussion during the budget process if we wanted to increase the fund balance. We've done things in the past where we increased our contingency expenditures and then anticipate that they wouldn't necessarily be spent, but they would be there available if we needed to. If they aren't spent, obviously, then that increased fund balance. Each year for a number of years now, we've had about a $50,000 increase, or a budgeted contingency account, but it's, that's not much.
I mean, we used to be at 200 back when we had...
300, yep.
Yeah, 300 back when we had a $30 million budget, and now we're double that with 50. So we're, yeah, which is really, really, really low.
That's just one strategy that we've used, and we can talk about other things during we get into the budgeting process.
Thank you. Any other questions of Andy? If not, I take a motion to accept the audit report and the fund balance report.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion second to approve the audit report and the fund balance report. I'll notice for folks that are going to look at the material, that on page 54 of this, it notes that there are no instances noted of non-compliance under the government auditing standards. And then on page 57, our auditors did not identify any deficiencies in the internal control of our compliance that we considered to be a material weakness. And on page 58, this is an unmodified report with no notes. This is a spectacular report. You know, I see a whole bunch from school districts, and most of them don't come close to this. So congratulations, Andy.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Pankrits?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes. We've received the audit report and the fund balance report. Thank you, Andy, for all your hard work in bringing that to us. That takes us to the big moment, the reveal, right? Okay, that's naming of elementary school number four, and I'm going to turn it over to Jenna, Cubby, and Erica.
So I will just say a few really quick comments, and then we're going to turn it over to Jenna and Cubby. Is this on? To Jenna and Cubby, but they are so awesome. They have done such a great job through this whole thing, and I think what you are going to see from their presentation tonight, you are going to love. But we owe them a lot of thanks for all the work that they put into their video. And they are the only ones who know the names right now. Dr. Bustler doesn't know.
Well, on the other hand, we'd like to thank you for all of your help in this process. We are so happy to be involved with this, and we'd just like to say thanks.
So we are excited to be here today to share the results of the school district-wide name vote. Before we reveal the name, we'd like to remind everyone of the process that got us to where we are today.
So to begin, we had a community-wide call for name ideas. Between August 28th and September 27th, community members were asked to submit name ideas. In total, we had 204 names submitted for consideration.
On October 14th, during Committee of the Whole, the school board did an affinity process and narrowed it down to seven finalists that you can see on the screen.
Then on October 28th, board members voted to send these two finalists to the students for a vote. Oh, there we go. Our two named finalists were Forest Edge Elementary and Nine Springs Elementary.
Next, it was time to make our video. The purpose that we had for the video was to educate students on the name options, give students some context on the school and its location, share the process of how the voting would work, and reinforce the importance of using your voice in the voting process.
So one day after school, we went and shot a video. It was very educational for us. It involved, we wrote a script for it. We did use a green screen when filming our announcement for the school in our Panther Vision studio here at school. We used an industrial-sized drone to get some aerial shots of the site. It was very muddy that day. I went through one pair of shoes. It's, I can't recover those. And we actually interviewed the construction superintendent, so it was very educational, and we are just so grateful to go and see the building for ourselves.
Yes, it's a very nice building. Finally, it was time to vote. All students were invited to vote between December 1st and December 11th. First, the students were shown the video that we filmed, and then the students were given the opportunity, grades K through 4th voted in their classroom with their teachers, and students K through 12th voted via Google Form.
We had a total of 2,476 Oregon School District students that participated in the vote, which is 63% of the school K-12 population. For reference, an estimated 61.4% of the American population voted in the last presidential election. Soon, it really showed how engaged students are in our school district, and you know what? Our video just might have worked.
And then the vote was in. The votes have been tabulated, and the students have spoken. The winning name was chosen by 72% of our Oregon School District students. And the name is...
Oh, yes.
Forest Edge.
There you go. All right.
Yeah, so Forest Edge. Finally, we have a new name for our school. We don't have to call it Elementary Number Four. So yeah, we are really excited to announce the name of our newest elementary school, Forest Edge Elementary.
Thank you, and we have to now formally approve that, but we want to thank you for all the work that you guys did in getting that out to our students and getting the process in place, and thank you, Erica. So I would need, we need to formalize this, so I'd need a motion to approve our new name is Forest Edge Elementary School. And then a second?
I'll move approval of the new name.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Mr. Pankrits?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes. Congratulations, you guys, and thanks. All right, that takes us to Item F, Discussion Items. Presentation of School Start and End Times. Just to kind of preface the discussion, we've now named our new elementary school, Forest Edge, and that was one of many decisions that are being made relative to building a new school in the district. It started way back when we created the Growth Task Force and solicited options as to how we were going to proceed in terms of the growth in this district, and there were a lot of different options that got whittled down into where we are at today in building a Forest Edge Elementary School out there. And that moved through the process of designing the building, going out for bids for that, securing the financing, a lot of decisions through that, and then all the operational items that went into, that are going into opening a new school. And so we've been working through that process. We changed tonight's meeting from last week to this week because we wanted to get information and feedback from the listening sessions that we held. And we got plenty of feedback on that. And in talking with Dr. Bustler, we felt it was just best at this point, because we got a lot of feedback and a lot of viewpoints on the school's start and end times that we take a pause and talk with the administration at the meeting in terms of what that feedback was from the listening sessions, and to summarize what we've heard in terms of the email process, and to discuss potential options, but not to take action tonight so that we could consider that. So the way I'd like to proceed is to have the administration present on the process and then the feedback with the board, given the opportunity to ask any clarifying questions that we have. And then we have the OEA report. We'd like to bring the OEA up after we've had our chance to ask some clarifying questions, and then open it up for our normal public comment section for the public, if there's any comment for us to listen to. And then after that's concluded, I'd like the board to provide some feedback to the administration so that they can plan in terms of how to proceed for the 16th. If you have any viewpoints or questions or concerns, that would be the time, after we've gotten all the public feedback, to raise those with the administration or bring that to the attention so that we can move forward as we move into January to try to fashion a decision on this. How's that sound? Everybody over in this side okay? Here? Okay. So first part of this would be, I think Erica and Leslie are going to talk about kind of process and feedback, right?
I will...
Brian?
Actually, I'll frame this up just a little bit for you, so you know what's coming forward. First, we're going to share the slide deck from the parent informational meetings, and I'll take the lead on that. Then Erica is going to share information from the, feedback from the parent informational meetings, parent emails, and school staff emails. I'll say all of the feedback that you're going to get tonight is as of Friday at about noon, because that's when we cut everything off so we could get the packet out from the board. And then Dr. Bergstrom will share eight options with pros and cons, just to give you some assurance that we've casted, we've cast the net wide, we've looked at everything, and of course, maybe you'll come up with a new option for us, which would be delightful, and we have a month to bring that back, evaluate it as well. I'll say a couple of quick sort of key points before I get started with the presentation. I don't think there's any question that everyone wants the same thing. We want a, we want school start times that make sense for all of us on a 4K through 12 basis. I will also say this is a challenging issue, and I'll give you one of the indicators of why it's such a challenging issue. The last time we changed school start times was 20 years ago. This isn't something that gets changed on an annual basis. This isn't something that gets reviewed on an annual basis. I've spent my career working in districts that have always had student growth, and if there's one thing in common, it always gets changed when you're opening a new school. And I know the Vision Steering Committee looked at this back in 2016, 17. You read a little bit of the history in Section Number One, and the committee made the right choice, I believe, not to make a change in school start times in the 1718 or the 1819 school year, because we knew if the referendum of Forest Edge Elementary School is approved, that's going to result in a school start time change. I'll also say the goal remains the same, and we're planning, the goal is to make the working plan that we're working on now better than our current situation. We have some holes and gaps in our current school start times. We have some holes and gaps in our current busing situation. And then lastly, after Dr. Bergstrom finishes her presentation on the options, we welcome your questions and feedback. All of the administrators are here tonight, and they can answer questions just as well as the three of us. And I'm sure I'm hooked up. Indeed, I am. There we go. This, there's about 10 slides, and these are the slides that we used at the parent informational meetings. Of course, every time we start a parent informational meeting, a curriculum-related meeting, any meeting in the district, we always look back at our district mission statement. One of the, there's power in our district mission statement. This is the mission statement that we developed with stakeholders back in the 1990s. You look over on the right side of the screen, there we have our five values. And of course, at the center of our five values is a whole child emphasis. I'll also say a key part in this particular issue is educational equity. How do we balance an equitable delivery system, again, for 4K through seniors in high school? And yes, we know that is a big, wide age gap, with different needs, different responsibilities. And if there's one word I'd like you to focus on, the word is balance. How do we balance it all out? We've also had a history of bringing together the community. It's one of the reasons that the board asked us to do these parent informational sessions. You saw how well it worked with our SRO agreement. We carried that SRO agreement in our backpack for a long time. We ended up in a good spot when everything is done. We've carried this in our backpack for a while as well. The goal is to end up in a good spot when we're finished. Again, something, you've seen this before, board members, it's really our old-time, three-phase approach. We have to responsibly plan. We then go into a listening phase, and then the board makes a final decision from a policy governance standpoint. We're still in the listening phase tonight. We were in the listening phase with the parent informational sessions. Here are the four pieces to the puzzle. District growth. We had a table at the parent informational sessions that addressed each one of these four areas. Oddly enough, I was at the district growth table, it had the least amount of people, I think, because when we asked the question, "How many students are we going to grow by in the next 10 years?", what's the answer? Everyone seems to be on the page with, "Yeah, we're going to grow by 2,000 students." Attendance boundaries, depending on the meeting, either had a few or a lot. Student school schedules had a few or a lot. Bus routes had a few or a lot, depending on the session. I'll also say, they are interrelated. There is no way to separate one and pull one out and deal with it separately. They are interrelated and connected. Here's the district growth picture. Again, we have, one of the challenges we have in the district is we are long and narrow. Now, that's also a great opportunity for us, but it does create a challenge. And one thing I learned during the referendum, there were some folks that didn't know the city of Fitchburg was part of our district. I thought everyone knew that, but as we did our over 70 community presentations, there were some groups that just flat-out didn't know that. In terms of attendance boundaries, you approved this tonight. The Attendance Boundary Task Force did a marvelous job in terms of prepping and planning and getting us ready for this. Each K-6 student will be assigned to a school around that March area. We have a process to handle exemptions. And also, another positive, hopefully this will simplify our busing zones. This was a big piece of information that we looked at in terms of school start. The American Academy of Pediatrics has identified strong research for middle and high school students starting at 8:30 a.m. or later. There is some research for elementary students, but it's limited by comparison. When we look at the student schedule objectives, there were really three. Ensure a similar experience for all K-6 students, school day hours, teacher prep time. This was something that came out of the Boundary Task Force as well. Also, the second point, build in additional time for K-6 schools for lunch and recess. And align with, align our school schedule with adolescent sleep recommendations endorsed by national organizations. This is sort of a busy chart. On the left is elementary, in the middle is middle, and on the right is high school. These are our peer districts in Dane County with their start and end times. If I were to summarize it in just a couple of sentences at the elementary level, you take out Wanake, and you take out Sun Prairie, everyone starts between 7:45 and 8 o'clock. When you go to the middle, to middle schools, there's a little later start, and they tend, and I'll say there's a trend of starting later when you look at Middleton, Cross Plains, Wanake, Oregon, and Verona. Later trending towards that 8:30 time. No one at the middle or high school level starts later than 8:30. You see the same trend in the high school chart. Here's another, here's another busy slide. It shows elementary, middle, and high again, and this is in terms of school day. You look at elementary, basically elementary schools are around seven hours a day. In this particular incident or case, Oregon is seven hours and 10 minutes. We've rolled that back in, I think it's number, option number eight or option number seven, to seven hours and five minutes. There's some flexibility there. If we stay with our peers, we're somewhere around six hours and 55 minutes and seven hours. At the middle school level, we are right in the middle of the pack at seven hours and 15 minutes. At the high school, we're at the upper, we're in the upper tier, or I'll say the lower number of minutes, but again, there's not a lot of variation. The forest is seven hours and 25, we're 7:15.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is this current times or this is proposed times for us?
This is proposed for us.
Based on our proposal that you were sharing?
Yep. What we've called our working plan number one.
Okay.
Which is right here. In the grayish shows where we currently are today, and... In the, in the grayish shows where we currently are today and I'll say in the orange is working plan number one. One of the takeaways from this page is RCI. You'll notice RCI is at seven hours and 20 minutes because it really models a middle school schedule more so than an elementary schedule, which we are transitioning toward. And as Leslie said earlier, in a couple of years, RCI is going to become an elementary We have growing pains and there's just no two ways around it and we have growing pains as we merge RCI, we used to call it elementary four, now it's Forest Edge, because they will both have fifth and sixth grade students. Remember, one of our goals is that fifth and sixth grade students have a similar experience. In the working plan schedule, RCI will lose 10 minutes of instructional time. Actually, at seven minutes, at seven hours and five minutes, they will lose 15 minutes of instructional time. If we were to go to the standard, I'll say more standard at the elementary length of day at seven hours, RCI would lose 20 minutes of instructional time. And if we change, everyone following me? If we stayed with our current six hours and 50 minutes, RCI would lose 25 minutes of instructional time. That, that's a challenge for us to work through. When we looked at bus routes and those of you on the Vision Steering Committee remember our early morning meetings, talking about busing and how we can make busing better. And you might recall feedback that we've provided to you from Raven Oaks and some other areas in the district that were, I'll say, the longest drive to the center of the village of Oregon. We came up with three objectives. We'd like students to arrive at school close to start times. Now, that seems really obvious, but we're not able to do that with our current system. We also want students to depart from school close to the end time. We can't do that right now with our system and we'd like to reduce bus time wherever possible. And that's not a contractor issue. That's a layout of our school district issue and also how we transport students in terms of trying to get them to school on a reasonable time. Here are a couple of examples of our growing pains. Because all the schools currently begin within 15 minutes of each other, some, not all, but some of our five, 12 grade students are dropped off 60 minutes before school starts. I said that right? That's not a typo. They are dropped off 60 minutes before school starts and that's not something that started in 2015. It didn't start in 2019. That has been with us for a couple of decades. I was looking back at some materials, there was PowerPoint back in 1990. And even though it was very old and very simple PowerPoint, Katie found a PowerPoint of when we made the change to a half mile busing in the district. That was a significant change because state law has busing, the bus law is bus at two miles or greater. And we all made a decision back in the 90s to bus at a half a mile or greater. That is a tremendous benefit to our school community, but it adds to the complexity of our busing. We also have students waiting up to 30 minutes after school to get on a bus. And of course, this is sort of common sense. Long wait times create behavior issues. Here's a chart that Andy and Mark put together. It's called estimated average arrival and departure times. And to me, here's my takeaway from it. Andy can go into greater detail. In what I'll call the teal, you'll notice those numbers are higher, especially at RCI, middle school and high school. When you look in the gray area, high school goes down from 46 minutes to 15. Middle school goes down from 35 minutes to 15 and the departure drops in half from 20 to 10. Same thing at RCI. Not really a lot of change at Brooklyn, Netherwood and Prairie View. Andy can fill you in with hours of detail on this. It gets us back to, you know, our interrelated components. Again, district growth is driving this. Attendance boundaries is driving this. School schedules are driven by this and ultimately it's bus routing that's driving this. These are the displays and discussion boards that we use at the parent informational sessions. Leslie and John Tanner were at the attendance area assignments, so they walked through questions that parents had about the attendance areas. They showed, board members, I believe you saw this in September or October, sort of our projected opening day enrollment estimate at Forest Edge Elementary School. Again, you'll notice something on this chart. Do you see in grades five and six, there's a higher number of sections? We're doing that in grades five and six because those students will matriculate in one year or two years. And if we were to overload kindergarten through fourth grade, this sounds crazy. If we grow really fast, we may not have a seat for someone that moves in right across the street from the school. So we're building, we're reducing our enrollment overcrowdedness in our elementary schools, but we're also being, trying to be smart about it so we don't fill up Forest Edge Elementary School too soon. This is research that Gina and Erica shared at the school schedule. This is the sleep research, the adolescent sleep research. This is also the school schedule that they shared. We also had the, these are the same charts you saw before, a look at surrounding Dane County school day schedules. Again, at the elementary in a nutshell, it's between 7:45 and 8 o'clock. When you take out Wanaquie and Sun Prairie. In the middle school and the high school, you can see there are a trend of school districts starting later in the day. I see people taking pictures, so I will wait for the camera to go down. You can also send me an email and I'll send you the PowerPoint. Sorry if I cut you off and I didn't see you taking a picture earlier. Again, Andy and Mark, this was their sole item that they had in terms of estimated arrival and departure time and a question I know they were asked, can we see the transportation route? I want to see the route that my son or daughter is going to be on. And our answer to that was, we would love to give that to you, but first we have to assign all the students to a school and then we can work up the digitized routes and let's, let you know exactly what those routes look like. Now we're, we're off to part two with Erica.
So I'm going to be, so I'm going to be walking through. Better? Oh, yes, much better. So I'm going to be walking through the feedback that we gathered and the feedback that I'm going to be sharing comes from three different sources, the informational listening session forms that we collected, parent feedback, emails that were sent to Dr. Bustler and Dr. Bergstrom, and then feedback that we have from staff. So real quick, I'll go over the session attendance. So we had, we had three sessions that everyone were invited to, that you can see here. Monday, Tuesday, oh, I'm sorry, Monday, Saturday and Thursday sessions. And you can see the number of attendees that came. And then we had kind of an impromptu session. There's an English language learners class that goes on every Tuesday at the school district office and they had invited us to come and present. And it was a great forum because we had an interpreter and we could just take the time that we needed to answer the questions. So that was another form of feedback. So in total, 179 people attended one of these sessions. We had a feedback form that we gave everyone the opportunity to fill out after the session and we collected a total of 111 forms after, after the sessions. So I'll go through some of the, the feedback that we got. Part of the form was rating questions. So this was a five point, five point Likert scale. And the takeaway that, that I take away from this is that all the, all the averages are fairly high. I mean, all these things are important, right? Kind of like what Dr. Bustler said, we have to balance a lot of factors and it's hard, they're all important things. If you look at the two highest averages, question six and seven relating to transportation were very, very important to people, followed by question one, in order, children attending schools close to where they live. So that, again, they're all important, but that's a little bit about the rating questions. Next, we're going to go to open-ended feedback. So the form had, had space for people to fill out, fill out open-ended comments. 82 of the forms that we received included the comments. And so what we did is went through them and summarized them into themes. And so the next few slides, you'll see the theme, the number of people who mentioned that particular item. And this, the first slide of this section, I would say, these are the, these are the biggest themes that we saw. So number one with 12 people mentioning it is that people are concerned about what, what impact is having the day end a little bit longer have on school activities and appointments and time at home with their families. 11 people made positive comments about the district. They were happy that we held these sessions, felt that, that it was good to have this interaction and were pleased that we were able to collect the feedback. In terms of extending the, the K4 day, there were concerns about it being too long. That was noted by 10 people. Nine people respectively were concerned about delaying the, the start time for OMS or OHS and nine others liked adding time for elementary lunch and recess. And then eight people mentioned that they were pleased that we were thinking about the AAP recommendations for adolescent sleep. Now, as we go on, the numbers get, get smaller, so I won't go through every single one, but I'll pause, take a question, take a second and look through them. I'm going to move forward. If anyone needs more time, just raise your hand. Then there were a series of just individual comments that people made. So that is a summary of the feedback forms. The next type of feedback that we received, Steve, did you have? Oh, I thought you were going to. The next section of feedback is the parent emails. And again, these were parent emails that were received by Dr. Bergstrom and Dr. Bustler as of 12 PM on Friday. So in total, 42 parents contacted us with an email. The themes, again, the biggest themes are here on this chart. 22 of the email, the people disagreed with extending the time of the K4 day and were just worried that it's, it's too long for, for K4 students. 21 disagreed with starting it at 7:45, so starting earlier. 16 specifically mentioned that they thought it was great that we're aligning with the AAP recommendations. 10 had positive comments about their teachers or district or administration. And then six had a concern about the K6 school starting at the same time because they might have children at different schools in the district and perhaps they drive, drive them to school and we're worried about how that would work out. So we're going to kind of do the same process here. I'll just go through and I won't read every single one just because it's lengthy, but I'll, I'll pause and if you have questions or you take a, take a second to, to look. I'm going to go to the next one. So in each of these, three people mentioned each of these themes. I'm sensing that you're ready to move on once again. And then we have a series of individuals who mentioned certain comments. So the next, the next section talks about feedback from staff and in particular from leadership teams. So this next slide, so I'm going to present both the challenges that were mentioned by leadership teams and then also opportunities. And these were what principals had shared in terms of their leadership teams, so we summarized, summarized them. So some of the challenges that were, that were brought up were, it's a longer day for K4 students. It is an early start time, so you know, ideas of, you know, are we going to see more tardy students or is it going to be harder for them to get breakfast came up. Some at the elementary, some at the elementary level said they didn't want more time for lunch. There was one challenge, you know, is it going to be challenging to have less time for lunch at the high school? Another challenge is that there needs to be restructuring of the schedule for schools that have reduced time. Later date impacts of activities were, were a challenge. And then some teachers said that they were not informed about, about the process. And then of course, when there's challenges, there's also opportunities. So the potential for morning PLCs was exciting to some leadership teams. Less wait time for bus riders in the morning. A leadership team said that this process provided them an opportunity to engage and more have engaged than they would have and were able to strategize together. Reduced bus duty and wait times, in particular for RCI and OMS, were an opportunity. A less hurried day for elementary students. And then whenever you have the opportunity to restructure a schedule, there are opportunities that come along with that and that can be exciting. So the final piece of feedback that I'll share from staff, Dr. Bustler sent an email to all staff inviting them to share feedback with, with us, with him for, for, for this process. And in total, he received 13 responses to that email. Many of them were thanking, thanking him and appreciated that there was an outreach to share the feedback. Six, six of those disagreed with adding additional time to the elementary school day. And then you can see it, it goes down, the numbers go down from there, but three supported the proposed change, like that it fixes transportation. And you can see as we go down and there'll be one more page of this that I'll let you take a look at. take a look at. So that is the feedback that I have to share with you. What questions do you have about anything that you've seen?
One thing that, we've got copies of all this and had that prior to tonight's meeting through our board packets, and included then what the board has reviewed were all the emails, and that was, we were provided with all the emails that were sent to Dr. Busler and administrative team, plus any of the emails that we had. So we have all that information, and I know in talking with board members, we've reviewed that information as well. So any specific questions of Erica about the feedback schedule at this point? Okay, I think it's you, Dr. Bergstrom, then to kind of look at, way to play around with some options for consideration over the next month.
Yes, so I will be walking you through eight potential options. And of course, it's not an exhaustive list, it's just a list to give you some potential ideas. And when we talk about the options, we have to understand that all of these options are based on specific assumptions. And also, they're based on potential costs and a list of pros and cons. And if we are changing any of the assumptions on which the options are based, or we're changing any of the parameters, we may need to do some additional research. So know that as we move forward. So, for option one, thank you, Erica. Option one is really just everything staying the same, and we add a new school. And that would maintain our current start times and our current day length for all schools. And Elementary Number Four, or Forest Edge, you may have to give me some grace as I get used to calling it that, but as Forest Edge would then follow the K-4 start times and day length. And we would retain our current transportation approach and add single runs to serve Elementary Number Four. And just to make sure we're clear, single runs are a bus that drops off, picks up students at home, drops them off at school, picks them up at school at the end of the day, takes them home, as opposed to the double run that does all of that twice for two different sets of kids. So, staying the same would require three to four additional routes to serve Forest Edge. And we are estimating that single run routes would be about $52,000 each, so we'd be talking about an annual cost addition of $156,000 to $208,000. Now, the pro to staying the same is that it does not require any change to start times, and it does not require any change to length of day. However, the con, there are a few listed, and that it continues the student wait time challenges that are at RCI, OMS, and OHS. It doesn't adhere to the AAP sleep recommendations. And in this particular option, grades five and six, the students in grades five and six at Forest Edge would have 30 fewer instructional minutes a day than the fifth and sixth graders at RCI. The transportation would end up working a little bit differently. The Forest Edge students would be on buses that had 4K through grade six, whereas the other students would maintain our current system, which is our 4K students ride together and our RCI students ride with the seven and 12. And then, of course, another con is that the additional funds that we spend on transportation are spent on that rather than other educational priorities. So now, we'll go to option two. Option two is interesting in that everything stays the same, but we have a different approach to transportation, which is all single runs. No more double runs. And that really means that schools can start whenever we designate because we're only using single-run transportation routes. Well, you see the assumptions there. Single-run routes to fix the problems that currently exist and to add our new school would be 10 additional bus routes. So that would be approximately an annual cost of $520,000, and there'd have to be some contract renegotiation with our bus contractors. So, what is the pro? Well, it doesn't require a change from length of day. It reduces the early bus pickup times and reduces wait times because we are able to play around with start and stop times in order to make that happen. Now, the cons are the feasibility of finding additional resident bus contractors, which is part of Board Policy 751, to implement a single-run model. That's a lot of buses that would be added. And also, the feasibility of finding qualified bus drivers for all of the buses that are added. And then finally, it's funding spent on transportation rather than some of the other educational priorities that we have. So then we'll go to option three. This would maintain the length of day for all K-4 students and all 5-6 students. But what that means is Forest Edge would have two different student schedules, so that it would have a K-4 schedule and a 5-6 schedule. All the K-6 students at Elementary Number Four, or Forest Edge, would arrive at the same time on the same buses. So that would be three to four additional morning buses that would take all K-4 kindergarten through sixth graders to school. And then those buses would take the K-4 students home. But the 5-6 students would stay for the additional times, that their time would be equivalent to RCI. And then to get them home, we would need an additional three to four buses after the other ones have left. So this one is a little difficult to do a cost estimation because there are so many complexities, including a contract negotiation for the afternoon. But that would be a minimum $234,000. So, what are the positives for it? It doesn't require a change in length of day, and the day length for students in grades five, grades five and six is consistent across both schools that have students of those grade levels. But the cons are that you'd have, Forest Edge have two different schedules for students and staff. And that also means that Forest Edge families have two different pickup times for their students. And the building-level meetings would need to be scheduled to accommodate two different schedules, whether that's staff meetings, leadership team, that sort of thing. And then, all the fifth and sixth graders would be in class when K-4 is dismissed, so there could be potentially some disruption for arrival and departure. And this problem, or this solution, does not address our current transportation challenges at RCI, OMS, and OHS, specifically the early morning drop-off and the late wait time after school. Then additional funds are spent on transportation. And our current bus drivers, the conditions of pay do not include afternoon-only routes for the schools. So that's part of that contract renegotiation. And it does not adhere to the AAP sleep recommendations. So, here's option four. Option four is where our K-6 students start at 7:50, and OMS and OHS start at 8:35. So what that does is, that brings the K-6 length of day to seven hours and five minutes. And it brings the OMS and OHS length of day to seven hours and 10 minutes. The assumption is that the additional minutes that are added to the K-6 day would be used for lunch and recess, or K-4 day, excuse me. In this model, RCI loses 15 minutes of instructional time, but there is the 45-minute differential to allow us to run double runs. So the pros are the same instructional minutes for 5-6 students across the two schools that have those grades. Elementary Number Four only has one schedule. We're adhering to the sleep recommendations. We're addressing the transportation concerns. We are adding additional K-4 lunch and recess time, and we do not require additional buses to implement this solution. The con is, as I mentioned earlier, RCI loses 15 minutes of instructional time. It does require change and adjustment to different school start times. But in this particular model, OMS and OHS, or, excuse me, OHS is losing five additional minutes. They're taking 15 minutes that they're losing in our working plan already, and they're taking that out of lunch. And this particular plan, they're taking that 15 minutes out of lunch, plus an additional out of instructional time. And that puts them very close to the minimum number of minutes for DPI. Because if you remember the chart originally, we're already with the proposed plan a slightly shorter school day than a lot of our area school districts. So, then we'll move to option five. And this one starts our K-6 students at 8:00, and OMS and OHS at 8:45. So, K-6 day in this one is at 3:10 end time, would be a seven-hour and 10-minute day. There certainly is potential adjustment to that. And OHS and OMS is seven hours and 15 minutes. The additional K-4 minutes would be for lunch and recess. RCI loses 10 minutes of instructional time in this model, but we do have the 45-minute differential. So the pro, and you can read through them all, but you can see one of the biggest ones is that elementaries would start at 8:00, and that we would have consistent instructional time for grades five and six, one schedule for the new elementary school. We're addressing transportation problems, and we're adhering to sleep recommendations. And it does not require additional buses. So the cons for this, RCI, as we mentioned, is losing 10 minutes of instructional time. It still will require change to our school start times. That means bus routes for the high school, because please note, the middle school and the high school in this model ends at 4:00. So we would have bus routes competing with work traffic at the end of the school day. It's a later end time for OMS and OHS. There's an impact of this, of course, to the co-curricular participation and missed instructional time because it means that students would miss probably their last, for sure their last class of the day and part of their second-to-last class of the day if they're participating in an athletic event after school. There is an impact to teacher-coaches who would be missing the same amount of class. And it has an impact to students who might work after school. Okay, number six. We're in our final three here. And this one is an interesting potential option. It starts K-6 at 8:00, and OMS and OHS at 8:30, which means right away that we're talking about a single-run transportation model because we do not have the 45-minute differential in this particular option. So, the length of day in this, it would be decided at a future point because we don't have the 45 minutes, so that we have a lot of options to consider. But this particular option would require nine additional bus routes with an annual cost of $468,000, and contract negotiation with our contractors. So, the pro is that it does not require an earlier start time for K-4, and that it does adhere to the adolescent sleep recommendations. However, we are looking at the same cons that we were looking at when we were adding a significant number of bus runs and other options. And that is, we have to be able to find our local contractors to implement the single-model run. There has to be available drivers to take on those nine additional runs. And we're also spending money on transportation that we would, that there are other educational priorities on which that money could be spent. So option seven, this is the, it's similar to the other model that has K-6 at seven hours and five minutes. It's the other model that starts the day at 7:50. But this one has K-6 starting at 7:45 and ending at 2:50, and OMS and OHS at the 8:30 and 3:45 end time. The length of day is seven hours and five minutes for our K-6 students, and 7:15 for our older students. And there is, this is, this plan is an actual reduction of 10 minutes from the initial working plan that was put out. Reduction of 10 minutes from the K-6 day. So, there are lots of pros to this. There's the same instructional minutes for 5-6 across the district. Forest Edge has one schedule. We're adhering to sleep recommendations. We're not requiring more buses. We're adding time to lunch and recess, and we're solving our pickup and drop-off times. The cons is that it's reducing RCI's instructional time now by 15 minutes. And that, of course, it's still a change and an adjustment to a new school start time and to a new length of day. So with our, the final option presented this evening, and as I mentioned, these lists are not exhaustive as far as options go, but I think they give you a wide breadth of things to consider as we move forward. And the last option is the current, the working plan that we started off with. And that has a 7:45 beginning time for K-6 and a 2:55 end time, and then the OHS and OMS are 8:30 and 3:45. And that means that K-6 is seven hours and 10 minutes, and the older students are seven hours and 15. And in this one, RCI loses 10 instructional minutes. Otherwise, things are similar to what you saw in option number seven. And we could probably keep going with options, but we thought, you know, eight's probably pretty decent to put out there in one evening. So we wanted to articulate for you the assumptions on which these options are predicated, and a reminder that switching any of those assumptions might need some additional research to ensure we're thinking through all the pros and cons.
Over on the site, any member of the board have any question about those options of Leslie? I'll start with Barb.
First of all, if we go to the new plan, students will be getting to school closer to their start time. For students who have breakfast at school, how will that work?
We would probably work through the plans that the schools have already worked on, and that is, either students are given some extra time in the cafeteria to eat, or they're bringing their breakfast to their first-hour class.
Okay. There was some mention about kids getting hungry with a longer school day. Is it correct that students have the opportunity to have snacks available to them?
Yes, our teachers are really wonderful about that.
Okay. There was mention or a concern that lunch and recess time might be extended, which seems to be positive in most people's view, but there was a concern that that could change because an individual administrator might decide to add more instructional time. So I guess my question is, how much leeway do administrators have to change lunch and recess time to instructional time?
I think we've been pretty clear with our community through the listening sessions where we would add the time, and we wouldn't want to do anything that was contrary to that. So there wouldn't be a lot of leeway to add it to other things. I know there has been some discussion in adding to some rotations classes, but for the most part, this is time that we have pledged for longer time for students to eat and more time for them to play.
Okay, and then, lastly, until routes are actually set up, this might not be possible to answer this question, but time from pickup to drop-off. It sounds to me like for elementary students, it might be somewhat longer, but for RCI, OMS, and OHS, their total day from leaving the house to coming back to the house will possibly even be shorter because there will be less wait time. Is that correct?
I really don't know if I can say, or any of us can say at this moment, for the younger students, if there will be more or less time from leaving their house to getting home. Because as we stated, the bus routes have yet to be determined due to the exemption process. But given how much time too many of our students spend in school at grades five through 12 before the school day starts, I think that we'll probably feel pretty confident that a good many of them will have a shorter door-to-door day.
Okay.
And please, Andy is our transportation expert, so Andy, if I'm saying anything that you feel you need to add to?
Tim, any questions?
I don't have really any questions. I think this is a great list to choose from. I think some of the softer points that we're talking about, that I hear a lot... I think some of the softer points that we're talking about, that I hear a lot of comments about are the non-instructional time. It's the wait time, the bus time, and the recess and unscheduled playtime. Not all, but a lot of the comments that I heard are about the non-instructional time. And again, it's helpful to have the costs associated, because we can do whatever we want. But very soon, we're going to have to start making choices around if we're going to spend more money. And if the answer is yes, are we going to spend it on transportation? Or are we going to spend it on instruction?
Yes.
So this is very helpful. Thank you.
Good.
Any questions? We're going to go back, we're going to come back to the board after we hear from others, but any questions? Any clarify? Okay. Courtney?
Yeah, I have a question, and this might be for Andy, as opposed to you, Leslie. Obviously, at some point, we will gain enough students that we will be adding buses, regardless of what we do, because we'll have more kids to put on buses. So is there a magic formula that, you know, factors in here that, three years down the road, when we add 500 more kids, we're going to need another bus? Or how does that work, kind of in general?
You know, busing is one of those deals where there's lots of different variables, so it really, it's really difficult to tell you an exact answer. What I can tell you is, by having the 45 minutes in the dual routes, we are set up really well for growth. Simply because we can utilize those buses twice, which right now, we're not using all the buses twice. And, oh, I just forgot my other point. But it puts us in a good place to be able to scale up for that. Oh, the other point was this, that when we open the middle school, we will be taking, we will be taking the grade level from the first routes, which will be the busier routes, and moving into the secondary routes, which is the non-busier routes. The reason I say non-busier routes is because significant part of the high school is obviously driving with the parking lots out here. So, we're going to have more capacity in the second set of the routes than we will in the first set of routes. By moving that, when we open that new school, we'll be shifting some of those riders to the better situation, where there's less busyness.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is, we have some capacity with our current fleet of buses?
Correct.
To absorb some of the growth that we're going to see?
Absolutely.
Okay. I guess another question I have relative to the buses, is a lot of the feedback that I saw made reference to our half-mile decision versus the two-mile decision for bus routing. That's probably a separate discussion, because that's board policy, correct? So, does that factor in, and would that help in this discussion? And additionally, I know, why is this so?
You don't want to point it at us.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Now you made me forget my second point. Yeah, well, what's the impact of that? But also, another point is, how do we, or can we look at more efficient use of buses in terms of the routes that they have? And do we have any kind of policy about how far kids walk to a bus stop? As opposed to going into neighborhoods and getting kids at individual houses? And time, I mean, that factors into time for kids on buses. It doesn't necessarily help a kid not have to leave their house at a certain time to get to a bus stop. But there may be some benefit in that as well. I'm sure you've looked at that, but I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I'll take the second one first, so I don't forget. When we worked with the transportation contractor, he did a lot of measurements to see how efficient we were. And he came up with very high efficiency ratings. So we think we're doing a pretty good job with that. The second part of your question was something that we actually analyzed in the functional analysis days, which maybe Steve remembers. And that's where the PowerPoint that Katie found came from. And that's what we found when we investigated that, is it would save, you know, almost $100,000 or $200,000. But in the grand scheme of things, it created more problems than it solved. And those problems were, we were having, even back then, issues with traffic around our schools. And we thought that if we take away that transportation that we were providing, which was actually the most efficient transportation that we were doing, because a bus could go and stop at five or six stops within 20 minutes, and be basically full. So it was a very low-cost transportation that we were providing. And then take them to school, and if we didn't do that, we would be creating more traffic at our schools. So that's when we kind of said, you know, let's not investigate that any further. It sounds like we'd be kind of shooting ourselves in the foot, so to speak, by doing that. For a relatively small amount of savings, we'd be creating more of a problem.
Last question, which is probably for Leslie or Dr. Bustler. What is the minimal requirement for minutes per day for OMS and OHS, and how much wiggle room do we have there? It's referenced a few places, but I'm not...
Interestingly, that's a Gina question. So I'm going to take, pass it over to her.
Can you say it again, because of the feedback for me? Yes. We're having trouble. The question is how, what is, well, yes. What is, no, it's all right. What is the minutes requirement per day at particular, at the high school? And what is our quote-unquote wiggle room regarding the length of day?
So DPI specifies that we have at least 1,137 hours at the high school. So we filled in the three snow days, and so we have about a two-to-three-day wiggle room potential. So, but we also have, like, homecoming period, the ACT testing. So at the end of the day, we really only have about a day wiggle room.
That's over the year, but what's the minutes over a day? Because we're timed, I mean, our context here is seven hours, 10 minutes, seven hours, 15 minutes. What's our cutoff for the high school? We cannot go shorter than?
I wouldn't go more than seven hours, 10 minutes, to be safe, unless we looked at changing other practices, like ACT testing and homecoming period.
I believe when Jim did some of the calculations, he was quite uncomfortable with the seven hours and 10, and how close he was to the minimum.
Because if we have anything, like a water main break, or anything like that, then we're making up minutes immediately.
Five-minute reduction in one school day costs you several school days over the balance of a school year.
Say that again?
So a five-minute reduction in a single school day costs you a couple of days instructionally over the school year. So it adds up pretty quickly.
Okay. You know, that's helpful for issues.
And it goes the other way, too.
Yes.
Adding five minutes reduces the number of instructional days.
Or gives you more...
Yes, gives you more, or gives you more.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Troy? All right. Andy, can you talk about the 45-minute requirement that we're setting between, the differential between the schools? I mean, I'm assuming that's time that a bus needs to get out on a route, and make it all the way back with some time to go?
Yep, that's correct. When we actually went through the process with the consultant, a little over a year ago, when we came up with the idea, basically, he was actually asking for a full hour in order to re-stage those buses. And we started thinking about, okay, how we're going to do that. And it, I think it created concerns with the board, and the group that was looking at it, the vision and steering committee. And we kind of pressed him and said, what's the least amount that we could do? And he's, that's where he came up with the 45 minutes, and said, I can't go a minute shorter than that. You really need to give me 45 minutes to make this work the way it should.
Did our bus consultant provide any metrics for us in terms of how efficient we are compared to maybe other districts, based on square miles of district, and number of students, or anything like that?
I'm not sure that he did anything based on square miles, but he did give us some metrics. He continues to give that. I can pull up a PowerPoint if I needed to, that talks about kind of, I don't, off the top of my head, remember what those metrics are. But he said we were at the high end of that, as far as efficiencies.
Question about one of the particular options that we have. Option number three, which is the one where we would be kind of keeping the current day length, but staggering Forest Edge Elementary to have different schedules. Do you think there would be any possibility to do a double route in the PM? So if we were to kind of keep our elementary and RCI schedules, where we have that 30-minute differential, starting at the same time, ending at 30 minutes apart, and being that we have, we're planning to have a smaller number of K4 students, and a larger number of 5-6 students? I mean, any thoughts on doing a double route up there, and how that would impact the number of this 234, which I think would be, I don't know how many routes that would work out?
So, just so we can, we're on the same page. I think option three is exactly that. What we saw was three to four routes that are, actually, it says AM buses, but they're doing AM and PM. It's basically to incorporate the new school into our system. And then the additional three to four buses are to do a second run, if you would, with just those, it's just one run with the kids. If it's the later school day, would be for the fifth, sixth graders, to take the fifth, sixth graders home. So the 234 is really a very minimum number, because here's the problem. Basically, you're then anticipating using the contractors for one run, right? You're not doing it in the morning, you're just doing it in the afternoon. And with the bus drivers, I want to read your look there. Are you with me on that? Are we the same? Okay. So, so the three buses in the morning will also, will grab both K through 6th graders, right? Yep, they'll do both. And then in the afternoon, the three, those three same buses will only take, then, maybe the K4s home. And then we'll need three more buses to take the 5-6 homes, right? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah, but couldn't those be the same buses? Is 30 minutes enough to get?
I don't think so, because of the geographical area of where we're going to be taking students home. That's difficult to say for sure, just because, but I think we're going to be bringing students into the, I'm going to get my colors mixed up here, yellow, pink, no, not pink, yellow, blue, pink. So we're going to be taking students home to the blue areas, which is a fairly large geographical area. So we had anticipated having a second three buses, just for that one run. Now herein lies the problem, because we're going to go to Mr. Hagstrom and say, Mr. Hagstrom, could you buy a $100,000 bus? And we're going to give you half of a route cost, so that's $27,000. He doesn't break even for five years with interest costs, probably, and he has no operational cost to pay anybody. I think Jim's a pretty good business guy, I'm guessing he's not going to agree to that. So we have to renegotiate and see what it would take in order to have those buses available for that one run a day.
So the challenge is really, because 30 minutes, I mean, seems like a significant amount of time. The challenge is really that we're having to run from Forest Edge all the way into Oregon, and then get back to pick up that second route.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. One other comment or question, I guess, is with the, with the desire, or the desire to change the wait times, wouldn't, aren't we going to be making an improvement in the time in the morning that we're picking students up? It's going to be later. And my point being that more, it will happen more within daylight hours, especially like this time of year?
The improvement is really...
...that they've had, that my fifth and sixth grade children have had. So I'd be curious to know what that looks like, and where the breaking point is, to say, this is not going to be an acceptable level of education that we have for our fifth and sixth grade learners. I don't know if there's an answer to that, or if that needs more time, but that would be one of my questions.
Well, in my conversations, in my conversations with Principal at RCI, who is here tonight, is that whether it's a 10, 15, or 20-minute reduction, it's going to take a significant reimagining of the existing schedule. And that they are hoping that there can be a reduced impact on instructional time by rethinking passing periods. And I think that that is very reasonable, very reasonable for 10, 15. I think it's getting a little more challenging when we get to 20 minutes. But I know that Darcy and her leadership team have been very optimistic what they'll be able to do, as soon as they know what their charge is.
The last question I have, really kind of piggybacks a little bit on things that have already been asked and discussed, is, obviously, we're hearing a lot about the additional length of time added on for our K through 4 grades, and the concern of that being age-appropriate for those young learners. And so one of the questions I have is, I know we've said during these meetings, that that time could be utilized for the recess and lunch period, and those times of day that could maybe benefit from that. Is there a way to protect that with a policy decision, or something that can ensure that that time is not used differently when a different administrator comes in, or a decision is made that doesn't necessarily need to come to the school board? But there could be some level of protection in how that time is used and allocated, because I don't want us to make a decision that is not going to be in the best interest of our youngest learners. And so that would be one of my thoughts, if we do end up with an increased length of day for that K through 4 grade, that we are making some provisions to ensure that it's being used in the best way possible for those young kiddos.
The short answer is yes. The board can establish a policy guideline for us to implement. And just going back to your previous question, this might get me in trouble. But if we think of a 16-minute reduction at RCI, there's roughly eight class periods. So, again, the simplest approach possible, that's two minutes a class period. I'm not saying, we're not recommending that. We don't necessarily believe that's the best way, but that gives you context. And three minutes gets 24 minutes worth of reduction. There are all kinds of ways to do it, we haven't identified it, but that gives you a little framework.
And then my only other follow-up comment is that I would want to understand a little bit more about with this lengthened, if we go with a lengthened day for our K through 4 grade levels, how we ensure that our collaboration time is not impacted by that for our teachers? Because certainly, that's something that, we hold our teachers to a high level, and we have a high expectation. And so much of the greatness for this school district, I believe, comes from that collaboration. So I would, I would not want to see that reduced, or minimized, or impacted, or required to be done outside of their contract hours, if it's not already required of them today. So that would be my only other comment, is to make sure that we're being creative and thoughtful on how that additional contact time changes the prep time and collaboration time for our K through 4 teachers. Those are my only comments and questions.
Thanks, Anna. That's for any more clarification questions. Okay, now it's time to move on to a different phase of the meeting that's input. The first one would be from the Oregon Educational Association. Laura, you're going to speak on behalf of the association. Laura's the president of our teachers' union, and Laura and Jason Sims meet regularly, monthly, with Brian and myself. And this has been a subject of conversation at our breakfast meetings, or coffee meetings. And we discussed Laura getting feedback from the buildings, and has actually talked with the OEA membership, and that was ongoing. And so we scheduled a special meeting with us Friday to kind of review that, and Laura indicated she would come and kind of update us on the OEA's findings, or feedback on this. Got a new one?
I think so.
Here we go. So Laura, the floor is yours on behalf of the OEA.
All right. Is that on? Sorry, that's mine. You wish to be world-class. I'll do my T2.
Yeah.
The Oregon Education Association Board of Directors, as the duly-elected representative of the teachers of the Oregon School District, is issuing this statement to...
of the teachers of the Oregon School District, is issuing this statement to express concerns regarding the proposed changes to the school day at the elementary school level. The OEA recognizes that all involved in this matter share the same goal, providing a safe, secure learning environment for all students in our district, and creating the best possible opportunities for student success. We also recognize that with the opening of a new school, some changes are necessary. However, many of our teachers believe that lengthening the elementary school day is neither necessary nor beneficial. Wisconsin DPI recommends 1,050 hours of instruction for students in grades 1 through 6. Our students would receive 1,261 hours under the new plan. At kindergarten, those numbers are far more divergent, as DPI only recommends 437 hours of instruction. While we understand the desire to create a consistent experience for students at the 5, 6th grade level, we do not believe that lengthening the school day for all K-4 students is the appropriate solution. The current length of our elementary school day is in line with the surrounding districts, while the proposed length is significantly longer than most neighboring elementary schools. Many of those districts also have scheduled late starts and early releases, which decreases the total amount of instructional minutes and student contact time over the course of the year. Our elementary teachers report that their students are already at capacity with the current length of the day. When we lengthened the school day last year to make up for snow days, teachers made it work. However, it resulted in negative educational impacts. Teachers report it was more difficult to keep students engaged, and there was a significant increase in behavior referrals for that period of time compared to the year prior in our elementary schools. An additional concern among elementary teachers with lengthening the school day is the potential decrease of preparation and collaboration time. Currently, after-school is the only time in the day when elementary teachers have the opportunity to work together without interruption across grade levels and departments. With students in the building longer, that would mean a decrease in the time to work together, planning and preparing for our learners. While we understand the value of a later start for secondary students, we remain concerned about the proposed start time at the elementary level and how that impacts the emotional, academic, and social learning of our youngest learners. We are grateful to the school board and administration for hearing our concerns, and we look forward to collaborating and finding solutions.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, that takes us to communication from the public. We're going to revisit Policy 18004, and have any member of the public who wishes to address the board to come forward a couple of things about that. We generally, as a rule of thumb, say three to four minutes for that, just to be courteous of other speakers and give them time. And board policy allows us up to one hour of total time. The public comment time is not one where the board dialogues with the members of the public at that time. It's not the nature of our meetings to engage in those conversations. Those are for different types of settings and forums, but it is a time, if a member of the public wants to provide information to us, to do that in that period of time. And I remind folks that we've got probably 40 or 50 emails from folks with informations, and we've reviewed that stuff, so we've got a pretty good idea. But we welcome anybody who wants to come forward to speak tonight. And I've got a sign-in sheet. I've got three names here, but I know we had another forum that was going on, so some folks might not have had this sheet. But I'm going to start, how many want to speak on this topic? Okay. So, we'll call you up, and please, because of the number that we have, keep it to three or four minutes. It's Nikki Hawkins, if I said the first name right?
I didn't know we were supposed to put her in.
No, I've got, somebody who signed up was Nikki Hawkins.
She did.
Left. Okay, then Nicole Van, and I can't read the last name.
Oh, I just thought that was a sign-up sheet.
Okay, so, well, you can pass. Then Sagita Zolki?
Passing.
Passing? Okay. So, go ahead. You'll go one at a time, and then what, if you come up, if you give me your name and address, where you live in the district, and we'll go. And we've got a mic that works for you. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Heather Garrison, and I live currently in the, let's see, I don't know, the middle zone, but hopefully in the yellow zone, TBD. Okay, and I promise I will email this out after the meeting tonight, but I wanted to just make a quick comment. Thank you for all of those options. I just wanted to, for your consideration, option number five, but a hybrid, a couple things here. So, we could stay at 8:00 and go to 2:50, which keeps the start and end times the same, and the length of day, which does align with OEA, so that's great. 8:45 for high school could end at 3:55, and one of the other options, it did go down to 7:10, and I heard that that's not ideal, but possible. So, 8:45 and 3:55 could do that. RCI would obviously take a hit in number of minutes, but I do also hear that that's a possible thing. And they are considered K through 6, as you know, for DPI, so their minutes wouldn't, they wouldn't be at risk of being close to that. Also, it would be very forward-thinking, because in three or four years, if hopefully the referendum passes, obviously, we're going to have K through 6, so we would not need to go through yet another schedule change. So, I will email that out, but I just wanted to make a few remarks on the, all of the options that were presented. But what I wanted to share today is, I've been working with a researcher from the University of Kentucky, which I shared that original statement, or research, but I asked her for her actual statement. So, this is Peggy Keller from the University of Kentucky. She's a PhD, and research, and this is her statement. "So, Ms. Garrison, I understand you are concerned about the effects of early school start times for elementary schools in your district. As my research indicates, these concerns are certainly justifiable. Below, I will briefly summarize these findings, explain how early elementary start times came to be promoted by some activist scientists, and describe why the scientific field at large is no longer comfortable recommending early start times for elementary schools. First, to summarize, data from over 700 elementary schools showed that earlier start times were associated with lower average school test scores in every tested subject, and higher rates of disciplinary incidents." And I, again, will email all this out. "These associations were not due to ethnic composition of schools, the teacher-student ratio, the times on the schools located in, or whether or not 8th graders were included in the school. Additional analysis concluded that 8:30 AM may be a good minimum start time for elementary schools. This movement of later start times was met with various forms of resistance, including parents of elementary school students. Many school districts flipped start times of middle and high school with elementary schools in order to preserve staggered busing schedules." It sounds familiar. "It was at this point that the scientists in the movement made what is turning out to be a critical mistake. They assumed that early start times would have no detrimental effects on children, since they have an earlier circadian phase. They assumed that circadian phase was the only relevant sleep variable in question. Without bothering to check that assumption, they told parents in school districts that young children would be fine with early start times. They had no business doing so. It is important that you, other parents, and your school district understand that." Okay, just, I'll summarize, because it's long. "Even the most recent blog for 'School Start Later' states that they now seek to have no elementary schools starting earlier than 8:00 AM, and that if not possible, they want to minimize the number of years that children are exposed to start times earlier than 8:00. It is not clear why this time was selected as ideal. Further, multiple places on the website indicate they do not want children standing out at bus stops before dawn. Start school later should obviously not be considered a resource on elementary school start times. However, cautioning against elementary start times is a major shift in approach for the National Sleep Foundation, and school districts should take note of this." I'll skip a bunch. "In conclusion, parents should be very concerned about any start time that prevents their children from obtaining adequate sleep. This is the case for elementary, middle, and high school students. Districts should be praised for their efforts to ensure appropriate start times for all students, and should be extremely wary of anyone suggesting that early start times for young children are innocuous."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, I'm Betsy Archie. I live in the middle area, Fitchburg address, but glad to be in Oregon. When administration was asked about the research supported for the earlier start times and the longer day for the elementary school, there wasn't really a strong answer for this. How can we make policy that affects the elementary kids negatively, and not even look at the research? There's plenty of research out there. "As you heard from Dr. Keller's statement, is no longer recommended you flip schedules with buses." Sorry, I'm short. "This will prove to be a critical mistake that you make. As Dr. Keller put it, 'The districts who choose the options already.' The circadian rhythm shift, the sleep phase research, the district reporting is justified." Can you guys hear me? Okay. Can't read. "The adolescents' late start is gradual. We are making this even worse for the 4-6s, as their shift is almost complete. Later start times are better for all the students, based on the professional opinions and the research supported. Parents don't have that extra 20 minutes in the morning that they can cut out. This is their breakfast time. They're getting ready, their family time. This is their less hurried morning. Even if you do the simple math test, if a child is in the middle of their 9 to 12 AAP recommended sleep, if they're at the 10 and 1/2 hours, that K through 6 child would have to be in bed and sleeping by 7:30 to get to school on time, and even earlier if they ride the bus." So, the research on this matter has been shared with administration and the board, and many times, yet it seems like this administration repeatedly states that there's not enough evidence for the elementary. "It was stated in the information session on Thursday, when the family was asked, what was good for the young kids? Is this district ignoring the valid accepted research and the general nation trends, as it is so convenient solution, as we can fix this busing solution?" Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Kalenna, and I live in Fitchburg on Wayland Road, close to Kane, so I'm in the blue zone, I think, where I stay at Prairie View, where my kids currently are. So, when I first saw the posters with the, at the meeting, showing the length of school day and the school schedules for surrounding county schools, I kind of took them at face value. My curiosity kind of grew as my sister goes to school in Verona, and I knew they have one day a week for late start. So, I started doing some calculations and realized that the charts that were presented were not 100% accurate, and some of the schools do actually have late start or early release, which does significantly affect their weekly school time and their school day. So, I did look at elementary, middle, and high schools of all the schools that were listed, and it does make a significant minute effect of the average school times. What I found was Sun Prairie, Verona, and Madison schools were not accurately represented on the posters. I'm focusing mainly on the elementary school day, but have all the school information, if anybody would like to see it. Sun Prairie actually has an average of 6 hours and 35 minutes for elementary, compared to what the district said at 6:50. Verona, by comparison, had a little bit different. They were 6 hours and 30 minutes for a couple elementaries, and 6 hours and 35. And Madison, for their next year, proposed changes, had an average of 6 hours and 39 minutes per day, which was inaccurately portrayed on that as well. So, comparing to Verona, for example, who has the shortest school day, at 6 hours and 30 minutes, they also have 177 school days, which Oregon has 179, that comparing the two, at 6 hours and 30 at Verona, 7 hours and 10 at Oregon, that equates to 17 additional 7-hour school days for an Oregon elementary school student, which does not seem necessary. The other point I wanted to quickly make, for Stoughton, which is also close to the 7-hour and 5-minute, they have 6 less school days than the Oregon school district at the elementary school level. This made me kind of question why elementary school kids had to make up minutes last year due to snow days, because it seems like we already are over the DPI minutes required. And from my understanding and getting feedback, was that it was because high school needed to make up those days. And to me, that didn't seem, life isn't fair, I know, but it didn't seem like something that needed to occur, and I'm kind of wondering why that needed to happen. We did contact Bruce Anderson at DPI to calculate the actual instructional time for Oregon elementary schools, and Brooklyn was 62 hours over the DPI-required instructional hours, and Prairie View and Another Wood were over by 52. So, my concern is, there, to me, does not seem any reason we would ever need to go to a 7-hour and 10-minute for elementary. And as Heather had mentioned, I think it was option three, even if elementary did do that 8 to 2:50, which is the current 6 hours and 50 minutes, we would be, have plenty of minutes for those elementary school students. It makes me feel like the elementary school kids are kind of getting caught in the middle of all of this mess, and I don't think it is fair for them. We are, in fact, shortening the day for RCI, middle school and high school, and starting later for middle school and high school. So, to me, it does not make any sense to make our youngest learners start earlier and have a longer day. I think we need to advocate for what's best for our youngest learners, as well as our oldest, but neither should have to sacrifice, and I feel like the elementary school level is sacrificing in this situation. And I know as administration, even, I think, on a chart, it talked about kind of the whole child emphasis, and I know research has been shared about some contraindications of the effect of a long day on elementary school students, and just the rates of anxiety and depression in young children are linked to the lack of control they have over their days. So, it doesn't seem like adding extra minutes to their school day would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next.
Hi there. I am Jen Hans. My kiddo's in kindergarten, and we live in the top-left corner, Oregon-Fitchburg area. So, I'm here to question the need for an earlier start for elementary kids, if OMS and OHS starts at 8:30, based on transportation needs. So, I wanted to know what percent of the district's children is affected by busing. And many parents drop off. I see this every morning. This bus issue doesn't seem to affect them, even if these busing lengths were reduced for them, and that's not promised. So, I looked into it. The 45-minute start times has been presented as required, so that we can double-run most or all of our buses, compared to only about half of them now. This is supposed to reduce wait times for grades 5 to 12, and allow us to absorb the new school without putting any more additional funding into transportation. So, in digging to figure out how many kids these new wait times would benefit, I talked to Andy Wyland and Mark Fink for the percentage of students who ride the bus at each school, and I also contacted DPI. And so, this data that I'm about to present is for last school year, 18, 19 school year. So, my assumption is that we have 3,930 kids in the district. I don't know if that is exact or not, but that is the total number of students in our school district. We have 792 students, grades 5 through 12, that ride the bus. First, there's two issues to disclose with this number. This number only counts the students that are 2 miles or further away. We know it's half-mile for elementary students. So, that 792 is perhaps low, but it also counts the students that ride the bus just one time the entire year. So, that number could also be high. So, I am going on the assumption that those two things may, in fact, cancel them out. So, we're going with 792. So, these are the only kids that will benefit from this new 45-minute double-run differential. When looking at what percentage these kids make out of the entire student population, we get 20%. Said another way, 80% of kids stand to gain nothing from double-running buses, and of that 80%, about 40% of the elementary kids will be negatively affected because of earlier starts. We are requiring upwards of 1,600-ish elementary kids to start earlier for the benefit of about 800 adolescents, most of whom who are already getting a later start to their day. When you pair this with the same K-4 children that have to increase their day length because of RCI, and the new school overlapping grades, we get another example of kind of our lack of concern or purposeful decision-making for the younger ones. We're sacrificing their well-being for the benefit of the older ones, and in case of transportation, only 20% of our student body. My last note is, why didn't we include appropriate transportation funds for the new school in the referendum we all voted on? Personally, I've had many conversations with stakeholders, wondering why they voted for a referendum that didn't fully fund a new elementary school, and now we have to sacrifice our K-4 to get busing to work, and also fix a problem of wait times that has been around for apparently ages. So, let's fix this transportation problem. So, let's fix this transportation problem and not sacrifice our elementary kids. Thank you.
Anybody else?